Before the meeting.
Yep.
Called order to city council meeting for the CDV's Grand Forks for December 6, 2022. It is now six o'clock. What city clerk, please call roll.
Mayor Steve Gander.
Here.
Council President Mark Olsted.
Here.
Council Vice President Tim Riepel.
Here.
Council members Clarence Vedder.
Here.
Dale Helms.
Here.
Tim Johnson. Mark Demers.
President.
Brian Larson.
Here. Does term court. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Open forum, not attorney for members of this, excuse me, members of public to address city council on items not on the current agenda. Items requiring council action may be deferred to staff boards and commissions for research in future council agendas if appropriate. Is anybody who wants to address council that items not on the current agenda? I see none. Move on to approval minutes for the November 1st council meeting, November 8th work session, November 15th council meeting, November 15th special meeting, November 17th council meeting, November 22nd work session, and November 29th special meeting. Move by Riepel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Larson? I'm sorry, Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes. Motion is carried. Schedule bill lettings, there is none. We'll move on to schedule public hearings. Truth and taxation hearing to consider 10% increase to tax levy. Their motion open to public hearing. Move by Riepel.
Second.
Second by Vedder. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion is carried. The public hearing is now open. Ms. Anderson.
I want to welcome everybody here if they're here because of our truth and taxation meeting. What I was gonna do was I was going to kind of go over the tax statement you got, the proposed taxes, just so we have a better understanding of them. So on the right, it talks about the property tax value. And if you look at, says estimated market value, it says a 2022 amount and it says a 2023 amount. And then if you have a homestead exclusion, that's the next line. And the homestead exclusion goes away if the value is, home of the value is at $400,000. Otherwise, there is some kind of exclusion for any home under $400,000. And then the number you want to look at is a taxable market value, and that is the value that is used to put the levy against your taxes. So if you go on the bottom part here, it has it split between state general tax, we have Polk County tax, we have CDV's Grand Forks, and we have the school district. In the next line, it talks about a meeting that you can go and listen to, and they'll explain the whole meeting just like we're doing now. So on this first, on this estimated here proposed, we had set the levy at 19%. And the reason it was at 19% because it's due in September. We cannot move the levy up after that proposed, the preliminary levy. We can only move it down. In September, we were looking at health insurance costs of over 50% from last year. Since September, we have worked with other vendors and we have gotten that amount down. So at the meeting tonight, we are looking at approving the levy at 10%. So if you look at your tax statement and the proposed tax for under the city, that amount in there, that increase from last year to this year, that increase should be about half, once it goes to 10%. I guess the other thing I want to talk about is that in the spring, you get a green sheet like this from the county, which is a valuation notice for the next year. And this is where it shows what your value went from one year to the next. And then it talks about on the bottom here, the meeting you can go to if you have questions on that valuation, if you want to contest that valuation. It's too late to do that now for 2023. However, they will be evaluating your properties again in the beginning of 2023 for 2024. So you can call the county if, you know, you have questions on this amount. They won't be able to do anything with their taxes for 2023. However, they can probably look at your property again, and it could be adjusted for 2024. Or make sure you go to the meeting when this comes out next spring. Otherwise, like I said, we're going to look at approving a 10% levy later in the meeting tonight. Are there any questions? Any questions in the council?
What have we got for improved efficiencies within the city budget?
If you want to come up and state your name and address, board him, please.
My name is Marilyn Ogden, and I live at 914 16th Avenue Southeast in East Grand Forks. I received my notifications and noticed the increase, and I did watch your meeting and understand the fact that there have been some changes. And we are now at 110% of the prior year's taxes versus 119%. So the people in East Grand Forks, the residents, are both paying real estate taxes, and we work, we have our utilities provided by the city as well. And so when we see increases in rates, whether it be taxes or utilities, you know, the same group of people are getting hit for both. And I would like to see some work done on increasing some efficiencies between the staffing, between the city and water and light, to help with the situation of labor costs, which, as you pointed out, Mayor, in the meeting, we have hardworking people in this city, and we like to pay them fairly, but we also like to use them efficiently. We did, when I was on the water and light council, work at trying to find a way to run the city and the water and light with one finance department. Currently, we basically have two, and we overlap. And we don't have sufficient people at the time to even segregate the duties properly. And so it was a constant problem with our audits, and we were written up at times because of that. So the thought was to, if we could take the staff from both and consolidate it, and through attrition, shrink it down to the point where we can then be more efficient, that would be good for both the city and the water and light department. And as I pointed out, there's very few businesses in East Grand Forks that every division of it has their own finance department. Most of the time, that task can be consolidated, and you can get increased efficiencies. It also allows for, at times when staff is out for medical reasons or any other reason, you have cross-trained, you can work more efficiently with that as well. So I'd like to know if there's been any work done or any thought given to finding ways to consolidate departments and use the staff that we have. When we have retirements, we don't necessarily have to replace them, and move to a more efficient means of doing the finance work.
I can personally address that for you, ma'am. I know that next year, we've talked about the last council meeting, and which you watched, that we talked about how we can look at doing an exercise of our staffing levels of how we're running the city. And if the water and light wants to be involved in that, we'd welcome that. And so I think next year, when we start out, I know I've talked to Mr. Murphy about it, and we all talked about it last meeting, that we'd like to run an exercise where we can look at staffing levels and look how we are running the city. And also, when we get down to it over the next few years, we all know that since cost of living has increased this last year, and going forward, that we have to be cognizant of what that's going to do to our labor, and how it's going to cost us as a city to be run, and at what level of staffing do we have? And can we go forward and have a better understanding of how that's going to affect us when we get to next fall? But we want to start that as early as possible next year to do that study and have a discussion at our work sessions on this. So that's, we are working toward to find some areas that we can work on. And it's something that we all know we have to do, take a look at that. Mr. Keith, you have something to say, sir? I hope that answers your question somewhat.
Well, we'll see next year when we answer the question.
Right, yeah, that's fair.
Yeah, I'm Keith Nichols, head the general manager of East Grand Forks Water and Light. Some of the things you've talked about, we did, our accountant is 20% used by the city, and it's supervised by Carla. And so we did eliminate one of our staff. Prior to when I came onboard, about six years ago, we used to have one additional staff. And so we did implement some of the things you were talking about. And right now, we only had two people in the office, because people are out for one reason or another, you know, this week. And so we have downsized, and we did, we did do some of what you suggested, so.
Thank you, sir. Does anybody else have anything at this time? Now to entertain a motion to close, close the public hearing. Move by Riepel.
Second.
Second by Vedder. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. Public hearing is closed. Move on to the second public hearing. Public hearing on updates to the transit development plan. Motion open. Move. Move by Larson.
Second.
Second by Vedder. All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Public hearing is now open. Nancy, please.
This is typically considered our transit development plan for routes, our finances, and equipment purchases for the next 10 years. This process has been going on for 14 months now, and we're ready to approve the draft. It does include some small route changes, looking at microtransit for East Grand Forks, similar to what we have now with like a senior rider dialer ride. And then looking at our out purchases for buses, facilities, equipment, et cetera. So if anybody has any questions, they can go ahead and ask.
Anybody have any questions from Selis for the transit?
One quick question, just maybe not exactly do our plan, but looking at the cash balance, cash report that we got, why is transit like 300? Is it just because we're waiting on a payment, or?
300 in the hole, we are waiting on payments.
That's what I thought, okay.
It's, it's very difficult to plan our yearly transit budget, because we have to wait for the state and for our bills to come in, and our bills come from Grand Forks, and then they make adjustments to our state amounts. And then based on that is what we can draw down for federal amounts, and so it's all very time consuming. And so we can go back in and write grants for past years if we need to, which is what our goal is this year, is to go back in and write some more federal funding grants or look at funding for those, I would say those holes or those deficits that we had in the local share.
Got it. So have we not received any funding, or we just haven't received all of our?
We haven't received any funding yet.
That's what I figured. Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions from Selis? I see none. Entertained a motion to close public hearing. Move. Move by Larson.
Second.
Second by Vedder. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion is carried. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you. Move on to the consent agenda. Items under the consent agenda will be adopted with one motion. However, council members may request individual items to be polled with, for discussion and action if they choose. Winning council members like 10 through 16 polled. If not, entertain a motion of 10 through 16, please.
Move 10 through 16.
Move by Riepel.
Second.
Second by Helms. Questions or discussion, please? Roll call, please.
Vedder?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Acknowledged. Have received reports, officers, boards, and commissions, regular meetings of Water, Light, Power, and Building Commission from November 2nd, 2022. Communications, number 18 is Mr. Sean Johnson, will share information about the outdoor wood burning furnace. Is Sean here? He is here, okay. If you'd like to come up front, sir, and state your name and state your address, too, please, sir.
Sean Johnson, 929th Avenue, Southeast. I'm just proposing to buy and install an outdoor wood burning appliance. They are, the more efficient ones, the EPA certified ones, that are not the old style that smokes heavily, and it's neat and high-tech and does its little thing so it doesn't smoke a lot. I'm just proposing it because I looked, and I don't see any rules against it. But I also don't want to invest in something that is going to get plug pulled on it if, you know, for whatever reason. But, so yeah, I guess, what more do I need to mention here, I guess, except that?
Mr. Larson, do I have to ask?
I can start, yeah. First of all, thanks for coming and talking to us about this. I've reviewed the information that you've shared and done some online research on these boilers. I can tell that they've drastically improved from the older style that I was familiar with, more of a Northwoods application. As we reviewed this earlier, we started to look at setbacks and, you know, distance from your neighbor, distance from the road, things like that. And in other comparable communities, the setbacks were quite large, to the point where it didn't really fit in a, in a town lot. And I just wanted to check with you and see if you had spoken with your neighbors, or you had any thought on the distance that it should be from your neighbor.
I have not, but I've seen that they typically 30, 25, 30 feet, 40 feet from the house is typical. I have a big yard, so I guess that's why it even crossed my mind. And I, I use a, one of the older style ones out of town, so I'm familiar with that. And I'm just debating, looking at the, you know, the newer, more efficient ones that are available, and figured I would let you guys hear about it and see.
Yeah. I might be wrong, but I think we were looking at some setbacks from some comparable communities that were like 100, 150 feet. And, you know, when you start to apply that to a residential lot in East Grand Forks, well, there's not many lots of that size.
Right.
And, and so that application really wouldn't fit what you're asking here. Have you had conversations with your neighbors or people in the area, just to get some general feedback on how this would be received?
No, but I'm friendly enough with my neighbors. I can ask them and see if it's something that, that they would have a problem with. They're supposed to not give off much more, or any more smoke than a regular chimney in a house. I don't have one of those. My, I got a new enough house that I just don't have one, so.
Sure.
Which I guess brings me here to you guys, to see what you guys think on it, and just kind of go from there. So should I talk to the neighbors and maybe and see what, if they would?
I would certainly be interested in feedback just from myself. Also, maybe a little feedback on the pile, on the wood pile, kind of, you know, where that would be in the yard, how you'd get the wood back there. Just kind of looking at this thing holistically and how it impacts the neighborhood is something I'd be interested in.
Okay. Yeah, I can check into that and come back with more information.
Mr. Demers?
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess this is more for Ms. Ellis. So in the building code, backing up, I think if we can do these type of things, I don't see any intrinsic problem with it. I just want to make sure that, like you said, it isn't a nuisance and it follows, or it follows along with other bill and code. So what I was wondering is, once someone has a fireplace, a chimney, is there a certain elevation that that has to be at? Can like, can you have a fireplace that just comes right out the side of your house at five feet and exits like that, or?
We do not have anything like that in, in our nuisance code. Building code.
No, that's.
Yeah, building code to some degree is more concerned about the fire code portion of it and less about the smoke. That would be more of a property management type of a code, because it would be something that would be a nuisance item. And, because smoke is really nuisance and less building code ish, you know, issue. Spoke with a building official, there's nothing that would stop him from applying for a permit to put that in as his type of heat source. Again, our biggest concern is if he puts it in, and the neighbors have an issue with the smoke or the wood pile, now his primary heat source is something that Ron and I would have to deal with as a, as a nuisance. So we're hoping to maybe address it less as just a generic nuisance. The smoke, the soot, the, the, you know, the rodents, or, or, you know, things that, that the, that the pile would attract. It might be beneficial for us to have some specific rules relating to a furnace so that we can apply that, rather than, rather than it just being subjective as, my neighbors don't like it, so now how do we determine if it's a nuisance or not?
Do we have any nuisance ordinance or regulation right now for wood pile storage on a site, like?
We do.
Certain amount?
We do. We have outdoor, outdoor storage nuisance. They can attract rodents, mice, those types of things. If they do, then, then they have to remove it or put it in some sort of storage, so.
I think it also says something about have it like in behind the yard or something, so it's not.
It can't be in the front yard, can't be in the right of way, yep. And then it can't attract rodents. It has to be screened. And if there is an issue, then it has to be, you know, we require it to be placed within some sort of storage unit so that it can't be accessed, so.
So, and I guess that, kind of back to the nuisance issue, my only thought was on the chimney height thing is, you know, is there a way to make sure that this is at the, at equivalent of a one-story home chimney? Like the exhaust. I don't know if that's, if that's possible, or if that's.
They usually come with a, like, oh, like a 10 or, 10 or 15 foot tall is, I think, the minimum for these things.
I mean, to me, then it's just like having a fireplace.
Just kind of a.
Got it. So then, I mean, to me, it's just like a fireplace, as long as it's kept, I mean.
Yeah, in the end, it shouldn't be any more, you know, obnoxious than a regular chimney, which can be. But other times, the wind, it's never not windy around here, so it's usually gone and not a problem, but.
Is there any smoke, like for nuisance regulation, is there any smoke nuisance from? Because we allow open fire pits or fireplaces.
There's general specifics. It, it, there's basically orders, there are odor. There is smoke, but it's not directly smoke. It's basically under the catch-all, whereas it's any, any other type of nuisance. So I mean, it doesn't have to say smoke to have somebody have a fire that's right next to my neighbor's window that's, you know, getting full of smoke. I mean, it's kind of a common sense thing, but there's nothing at this point, to answer your question, that derail, that specifically says smoke.
Right.
I, I think it actually, it might say smoke, obnoxious odors and.
It does. It has odors and, and certain things that it describes, but it doesn't really have a specific parameter that, you know, anything over so many, you know, micro liters or, you know, we have no way of testing, you know, if a smoke is noxious or not. It's all based on property enjoyment and, you know, that catch-all nuisance.
So as enforcement would go of a nuisance ordinance, it's primarily complaint-based, correct?
Correct.
So your, to your point is, there's a certain risk, right, is you put this in and it might seem all right, but if all of a sudden neighbors, all of a sudden band together and say, we don't like this, then I would imagine it's. Right, right. So, I mean, I don't have a problem with it. I think it's for the most part, same as a fireplace in a place, as long as the stack is at least one story high, or compliant with a comparable to a one-story high stack. I don't think that you should have any problems with it, but that's enough.
Anybody else have anything for, Mayor?
You know, I would look for an ordinance that we could defend, such that it's placed far enough from homes, the wood piles are addressed, everything's addressed. And then if you had a complaint from a neighbor, if you were in compliance with the ordinance, you would be able to continue on. I feel like that's what we owe to our residents. Take it outside of a complaint basis and bring it into, you know, what's proper, what's really reasonable as a neighbor, and then you can stand and do that thing according to the ordinance, even in the face of, of some, some dissent. That's what I think we owe to the community if we're going to do this.
May I address that?
Sure.
I think most, if not all, of the ordinances that I have looked at have setbacks from the next door neighbor's structure of 100 feet. That's minimal. And then they go up to 500 feet. So in all reality in town, other than maybe one, one or two lots, I don't think that if you're going to use a typical ordinance that I've seen through model ordinances, or even just going through and researching them, there, there's very few setbacks that you're going to be able to put it that is going to comply with a, with the setback provisions.
I just, what's the purpose of that setback? Is it fire? Is it nuisance?
A little, it's a little bit of everything. It's, 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 it's fire, it's smoke, it's, it's the, the enjoyment of the neighbor's yard, you know, trying to keep it back. But, and I, I've been asking whether or not I should be doing anything. We were kind of waiting on, on this discussion and, and finding out what the city council wanted to do. There's also some, I guess, installation things that are in the, not our building code, but the building code and the mechanical codes that we, that are encompassed in ours that I haven't gotten in great detail. And I, but, but there are, there are limitations.
I mean.
Primarily, they've been used in, in rural areas.
Right. No, and I, like I said, I get it, but to me, we allow an open fire pit 25 feet from your house that I guarantee is going to barrel out way more smoke and who knows what, you know. I have fires in the summer because we have a fire pit. I usually go talk to my neighbor, or we give a wink, hey, we're going to have a fire tonight. Is that all right? You want to come, or, you know. But we, understanding that it could be a nuisance like this. If, in my assumption, if we want to have an ordinance, it should be looking at the, the mechanics of this. Like, should it have, you know, flash suppression at the, at the stack, you know, so that you don't get sparks going out, starting fires? Or is the height the right level? Or, you know, those type of things are, do we make sure that the, the water lines are buried at a certain elevation because it becomes, it's not just a separate structure now, it's part of the, the structure of the house? Like, do we require a certain bury level for the water so that we don't freeze out lines and end up with all kinds of other things? To me, like, it's really a, it's a X's and O's of this thing. It doesn't, I don't think like this type. If we do that type of thing correctly, and you require like an efficiency level in these stoves, and you, you have these type of things in it, like, to me, it has zero, it's zero difference than someone that has a fireplace connected to their house, has smoke going up there, and, you know, sometimes I like that smell driving into communities. So if, if we're going to do an ordinance, that would be my thought process is, let's go down that avenue. Like, what do we require to get the, the results we want? We don't want to have fires spreading in the neighborhood. We don't want, you know, we don't want rodents, we don't want smoke pollution, or smoke nuisance. Like, we don't want water lines breaking and those type of things. So those would be my big four things. If we can account for those things, I don't see why we can't have that. I mean.
How deep is your lot? Do you happen to know?
I have a 100 by 260.
Yeah, 260 depth?
Yep.
And that would be, of course, your home sits back off the front edge somewhat, but, yeah, there's good depth there.
50, 60 feet from the, from the road, I think. And then, yeah, so I have a huge backyard.
Yeah.
Neighbors on Reinhardt then have a huge backyard, so together, it's, it's, it's a big area, but it's, yeah, not everybody has that situation. So this, yeah, obviously wouldn't work for everyone, kind of.
We talk about 100-foot setback from an adjacent home, let's say.
Structure.
Structure. Now, if that's the case, you know, what if the neighbor's home is here, and the neighbor's home is here? Are you coming on a line to the burner, or are you coming straight back 100 feet to a line here? Because if you're going diagonally to their structure, you have the full width of your, you know, 50% of your own lot can go into that 100 feet.
I can't answer your question right now, Mayor. I, I'd have to look at the.
That distance might be smaller than it sounds like.
And I've been looking at the ordinances, and, and they take into consideration fireplaces. But there's a big difference between having a fire pit and something that's going to be heating your structure for four to six months out of the.
Continuous burn.
Year continuously.
Yep.
So, so it, the, the ordinances that I've looked at and the research, the brief research that I've done, takes all of that into consideration. It becomes, it becomes a policy issue on what you want to do. And the only thing that you've got to remember is that if you're going to put it into place, it's going to be for everybody, not just for one situation.
And when you say for everybody, if you had to say 100-foot setback requirement from a structure, that would. a structure, that would eliminate a lot of our city lots. You know, many of our city lots would be eliminated, but not all.
Correct.
But I ask again, what's the purpose of the 100 feet?
I think it probably is, you know, the, the smell and the whatnot.
So are we going to eliminate fire pits?
Well, this is that continuous burn though. I think he's right. A fire pit is a dozen times the summer. This is all winter long.
I mean, there's nothing saying that you can't, like you could burn all the time, right? I mean, are we going to, I'm just asking if we're going to go down that route and start regulating those things?
I, I think we must.
Fires in people's houses? Are we going to allow them only so many burns a year?
This one is a unique one. I, I honestly think that by doing it, we're protecting someone like this as much as we are setting the parameters of how they should do it. Because if they comply with those parameters, it, it also provides them the protection for having it there. So it really is, I think, to their benefit and also to the greater goods benefit to make sure it's done according to the parameters we've set forth.
Mr. Riappel. Maybe you've told us, Mr. Johnson, when are you looking to put it in? What would be your timeline?
Before the snow fell? Next year, I suppose would be until this gets resolved, I guess.
Yeah, so we've, we've got time to address this issue.
Yeah, now there's going to be no digging up the ground and putting water lines, but, but yeah, this is to get the ball rolling and, and what, what the mayor was saying here is to get, get stuff in place so that it's, so there's something to follow.
We want to protect you at the same time is what we're trying to do.
Yeah, exactly.
Better?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just to put it in perspective, I, I know where you live. There's probably five, six, seven houses on your street that have the same depth as your lot and the same on Reinhardt. So there's 14 lots. You've got all the lots on Peabody's ponds that would probably meet the setbacks. You got all the houses on the golf course that would probably meet the setbacks and could have them. So to put it in perspective, you probably got 50, 75 lots, if not more in town that would meet 100-foot setback and could have them.
But it would be 100 feet from.
Buildings.
Well, I'll, I'll just go into it because I don't think one of the lots over on Peabody's addition would, would, would make the setbacks that are in these ordinances.
Okay. Then I'm wrong. Maybe then there is only 25 lots.
But that's the, the way it's read. And I know if I can't remember if it's the MPC or the EPC, the EA or the EPA that have a model ordinance and theirs starts out at 500 feet.
That was the MPCAs.
MPCA.
Which is usually more restrictive than EPA.
Sean.
And in terms of 100 feet, we have very few lots that are more than 100 feet in width. A majority of them are 100 feet or less. Most year houses are anywhere between 46 and 60 feet, you know, in width. So I guess it's all dependent on, you know, and their setbacks are, if it's 100 foot, it's a 10-foot setback from property lines. If it's less than 100 feet, it's six feet. So majority of the houses are built possibly in the center of the lot. We always suggest to move them, you know, have the garage side have the most space or the most setback because everybody at some point in time realizes they don't have enough garage space. So they want to add that stall. So we've been trying to push them, you know, as far as they can to one side so they give themselves space for additions on the other side. But a majority of the people center them. So, you know, at most you're looking at, you know, 12 to 15 feet on each side. So, so then if you go from specifically structure to structure, you have anywhere between, you know, 10 feet, 15 feet. I mean, it's, it's very, very dependent because our non, well, our non-residential structures, they only have a three-foot setback.
Right, but the boiler would be in the back of the yard.
Yes, and it would be probably centered somewhere in the middle of the house. So if you go from the center and then if you've got, let's say, 30 feet, 12 feet, 10 feet, so that's 40, and then you have another 12 feet, that's 52. And then it depends on if it's garage or if it's, you know, living space, you're still at under 100 feet.
And then you just push it into the back part of the yard to make up the 100.
Yeah, yeah, you would have to push it further back and away from the house.
Yep.
So.
To make up the 100.
Yep, yep. So it.
And I just want to say that I'm not against it. I'm just.
Yeah, nor am I.
Giving you the information that I have. I mean, I have no dog in the fight realistically, other than I have to enforce the nuisance when somebody is going to, you know, complain that they've got smoke coming in there and they got the next door neighbor has asthma and it's affecting my asthma and, you know, those types of things. So that's why I'm just bringing it up and, and what I've seen at this point before I've gotten into it any further.
I think what I'd like to see is actually, I know we got the address. We went to the GIS map and look at it, but I'd like to see actually something that shows where it's at. Before you get too far down this road and we get too far down this road, is it even possible to have, let's say it's 100 feet setback from structures? As you use the word, Mr. Olsted, structure. So that'd be my request that we take a look at that and say, okay, is this even possible? Let's say you pushed it back as far as you could in your backyard, are you going to be at least 100 feet from other structures? I mean, if it's not, then we really have, I mean, you have to look at it because we don't want to waste your time on it and waste your money on it if you want to do this. And I think that's, you know, something we need to make sure of.
And, and I can do that with him or I, you know, it's very easy for me at a, a work session to just pull, you know, open the GIS and do measurements of, you know, type in his lot, look at some other large lots. We can move around and just adjust and see what 75 feet looks like, 50 feet, 100 feet.
I think what I'd like to be brought back to work session is actually on our email to us in our packet, different maps. And if you're going to maybe try it here, it works here and it works there and have it in front of us so we can take a look at it, not just you doing it at the works.
Yeah, I can do that. We can prepare some maps for you.
That way we can read it beforehand, take a look at it. If we have any questions for you or for Ron or the rest of the staff, we can address those before we come to meeting and also, and also at the meeting. But I just, I think it's something we need to look at just to make sure.
We should clarify when we talk about structures, sorry about that, to, would it include if they had a small storage shed somewhere back of their lawn, right? I don't think we need to include that as a structure from the standpoint of the 100 feet. You know, maybe there's a smaller separation from a non-habitable structure or something like that. You know, you're out there in the middle of your yard and they just happen to have a little tiny storage shed not too far away, shouldn't exclude it, I wouldn't think. You're really wanting to stay away from the home where people live. Just throwing it out.
Mark, do you have something else, sir?
Yeah, two quick, quick questions, hopefully. Operationally, like I've dealt with wood, like you said, we've dealt with some wood boiler systems. Like every day you guys stoke it, usually once a day or maybe some older ones twice a day or something like, so is that something you're going to do every day? You're just.
I have kids that can help out.
But I mean, you're not going to go, you're not going to go on vacation for two weeks or is that your plan or is there like a dual, dual fuel portion on these?
They have a couple of different options, but the particular one I'm looking at is strictly wood. And then it sends you a text message and tells you when it's time to.
Right, right.
Go out there and.
I've seen that. I was just wondering is there like stump that like have a gas feed to it? So the wood kicks out, it goes to gas or something. I, it was, I just can't be imagined. I mean, that to me is more of a limiting factor on whether or not people are going to do this. Because there are, I guarantee you, there's probably, there are less people in town that are willing to go and stoke their, their boiler every single day all winter than there are available lots in town to do it, whether it, there's a 10-foot setback or not. So if you want to talk about limiting factors, it's that. So the second thing I was going to say is, I think, you know, it's, I think it should go through with, how I said, with certain things that you absolutely want to do. I think if you bolted this to the side of your house and cut a hole in your house and fed it through your house, just like you do your fireplace, it would be, there would be zero difference and you could have it 25 feet away from the house. So, or 12 feet away from the house from setback to setback or whatever. So to me, I think we're way overthinking this. Like I said, it takes three or four regulations that would do the exact things that we want to do and that would be all we need. That's all I got. Thanks.
Mr. Helms.
Yes, I have, the mayor kind of touched on it a little bit there, but the concern I would think about is that, you know, you're talking about how everybody's got such big lots there and everything and there's plenty of room, but maybe not today, but what happens tomorrow when one neighbor wants to build that back garage or something back there? I mean, is that something that, or what do, what do we do then? Are we telling him that he's got to move his furnace or do we tell the neighbor he can't build his garage here because his furnace is there or, you know, that's, you know, that's it? Because you know how, you know, and even your, you know, yourself, you know, you might want to down the road five years build a garage back there, you know? And so this, another thing that we got to be concerned about, I think, with, with the neighbors and you, you know, maybe if, like Mr. Larson said, maybe if you touch base with your neighbors, you might be able to get some answers to that too, possibly if.
You could do a contract with them too.
Yeah, okay. Nancy, do we know, do we have any wood fired burners in garages right now? I bear, I guarantee we do. I guarantee you there's some garages out there that have.
Yeah, I.
Actually, there if you don't.
Wood heaters, so.
I, I would say yes.
I guess Nancy and I spoke about this as well. I guess none that we are, that we've been made officially aware of.
No, no. And, and I, I agree with Mark to some degree that setbacks are helpful, but really it's the nuisance and, you know, measuring from site to site when our fire code, you know, requires less of a distance between, you know, houses and it, it's, it's, it's a unique situation, but it's really the nuisance smoke part of it and the pile and less about how far away it is. Smoke travels, it's, it, it's either going to travel 25 feet or it's going to travel 100 feet or it's going to travel 250 feet. It's going to travel, you know, if the wind is blowing in the right direction, if you're sitting in your garage, your detached garage, you know, and you smell it and if you have an issue, you know, the, the nuisance part is the complaint. So I really just think we need to address it as easily as we can. I had mentioned a secondary, secondary heat source rather than that being a single one because of the stoking. The other one is, is if we do receive a complaint and we have to settle it somehow or we have to try to figure out, you know, if it is in fact a nuisance or not, I'm more concerned that they would be without a heat source, you know, because we'd have to tell them to not burn because of the smoke, you know, or however. So it, it all just runs into more of a, you know, getting the stack high enough, making sure that it's a certain type of efficiency, you know, those, those types of things and less about the, the setback part of it. It's, it's my feeling personally, because we don't have setbacks for fireplaces from one house to the other or where it has to be located on the house, you know, so.
Anybody else have anything from today? I think if you work with Nancy and bring it back to work session and we have more discussion on it, it'd be great. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Number 19, city financial statements is October 31st, 2022. Everybody got those?
Can I just say thank you? I thought the, the cash report was done well. I, I appreciate that. Thank you.
You bet. Old business, there is none. Move on to new business. Number 20, consider adopting resolution 22 dash 12 dash 89, approving a 10% increase in the 2022 tax levy collectible in 2023. Motion. Move by Riappel.
Second.
Second by Larson. Any questions or discussion? Mr. Demers.
Thank you. Just wondering if we want, I know we aren't going to touch the budget today. I didn't know if it's presumptuous to do the levy before we have a budget or, I guess, I don't know all the ins and outs about what needs to be discussed on the budget or you want to bring back if it has a levy.
Mr. Murphy, Ms. Anderson, can you touch base on that one, please?
Excuse me, last year, we actually did the same thing. We did the levy on December 7th and we did the budget on the 21st. And the reason we pulled the budget out because we were going to do that is that we want to talk at the work session about the special revenue funds and the enterprise funds because we really haven't talked about them much because we've been really focusing on the general fund. So that is why we're postponing for two, that we'll bring it to the work session on Tuesday and vote on it the next Tuesday.
And those do not have an impact on the levy, which is, when, when this was brought to me, I was, I was fine with pulling it.
Good question though, thank you.
Anybody else have anything? Roll call, please.
Better?
No.
Helms?
No.
Riappel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes. Motion is carried. Move under 21, consider adopting resolution 22 dash 12 dash 91, approving and backing updates and amendments to the transit development plan.
Move.
By Demers.
Second.
Second by Better. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 22, consider adopting, excuse me, consider approving the transit asset management plan, which is subject to review and approval by the Metropolitan Planning Organization. Their motion.
Move.
By Better?
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Ms. Ellis, you have anything to add?
No, this is just one of our required FTA plans. This one looks at all of our assets. We do inventory and we do condition ratings every year. We look at whether or not it's in a state of good repair or not, and then we set goals and objectives as to how many buses we have or equipment over that state of good repair and, and which ones need to be fixed. And then this is how we budget for it.
Questions from anyone? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 23, consider approving the public transit agency safety plan, which is subject to review and approval by Metropolitan Planning Organization. Motion, please.
Move.
By Larson, Better?
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion?
Again, this is another FTA required plan. This one looks at incidents, accidents, any type of other injuries. We look at policy statements. We set performance measures as to how many accidents and or incidents and or injuries that we want. Obviously, our, our goal scenario is zero, so we set it as close to that as possible. We also do risk management. We do the training. We recently purchased a fairly expensive program called TransTrack that will track all of our safety incident reports, any sort of injuries, illnesses, you name it, handles all of our safety training, training. It also handles all of our asset management. And so we are ready to go. And then yearly, we do set performance measures, safety performance measures with the MPO. We can do it at a MPO level or we can do it by state. So each state sets their own. And that's where we at. Our plan is ready to be approved and then we should have everything ready.
Thank you, ma'am. Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riappel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers? Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 24, consider approving a lease agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and the Metropolitan Planning Organization for one year at a rate of 1345 per square foot and additional $300 for storage area. Space.
Move.
Move by Helms? Second by Riepel?
Losing my voice.
Sure?
Losing my voice.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. 25, consider approving a lease agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and a tri-county community corrections for one-year agreement at a rate of 1080 per square foot.
Move.
Move by Helms?
Second.
Second by Larson. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried.
Just a quick update. I have calls in to the city of Grand Forks, Polk County, and the city of Kirkston to look at what their rental rates are and whether or not if they rent to private business or if they do just public government type of agencies, nonprofits, what they're renting to. And I'll have something available hopefully at the end of January or February.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Number 26, consider approving the facility use agreement between the City of East Grand Forks and the Ann Carlson Center for the use of the VFW Memorial Arena for the ICANN Bike Camp for July 16th to the 21st of 2023 and waive the annual fee.
Move.
Move by Demers.
Second.
Second by Riepel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Number 27, consider approving the contract between the City of East Grand Forks and a village business institute for employee assistance program for three years at a cost of $2,970 per year. Motion, please?
Move.
Move by Larson?
Second.
Second by Demers. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yep.
Larson?
Yes. Motion is carried. Number 28, consider approving the contract between the City of East Grand Forks and a Brady Mars for auditing services for one year for a total of $43,600.
Move.
Move by Demers?
Second.
Second by Vetter. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes. Motion is carried. Move on to claims, consider authorizing the city administrative current treasurer to issue payment of recommend bills and payroll.
Move.
Move by Vetter, second by Riepel. Questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Better?
Yes.
Helms?
Yes.
Riepel?
Yes.
Olsted?
Yes.
Demers?
Yes.
Larson?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Mayor Gander.
Just a few things. First of all, I didn't have to vote on the levy increase. I almost had to vote on the levy increase. We're at six council members here tonight and the mayor breaks ties. If we'd have come down 3-3, I'd have cast a vote. But I'll go on record and say I do support that level of levy increase for this year. I think it's the right thing to do in light of the inflation that we've encountered. I don't like it. It's more than any of us would want to send on to our residents. And in that vein, I think we're going to be working really hard next year to duck under a number like that unless we hit some very bizarre circumstance like loss of local government aid or another really bad inflationary year. But we're going to work really hard to bring that down starting early next year, trying to find any efficiency that we can. It's going to be all hands on deck. Because we can't do this two years in a row, I don't feel, to our residents. But I do support it for this year. I do think, again, in light of all the cost increases, to try to duck under that. And of course, even with that, we're bringing in about 2.5% of the levy against our reserves to bring that down to that price. So we're spending a bit of our reserves to get it down to that 10%. And again, it's a very strange year economically for all of us, including the city, who has to buy fuel and who has to buy all the same stuff that the families have to buy. Number two, congrats to the EGF Heritage Foundation. And you might want to jump in on that. They had a great event last weekend at the Heritage Grounds for Christmas. Santa was there and they had a lot of good baked goods and a lot of kids were there, a lot of music in the church all day long. And just congratulations on that event. It was great turnout. Kids were just swarmed all over the place and it was really, really nice. And finally, thank you to Colonel Tim Curry and Jenny for the hospitality out on base this past weekend. They had their annual holiday party out there, got to join in with some nice young airmen from outside the area and had a good visit. And again, the connection that we have with the Grand Forks Air Force Base, very important. They see the connection back to our two cities. Grand Forks sees Grand Forks as really part of the morale of our troops, of our airmen out there. And so they value the connection just as much as we do. And again, I appreciate getting to know Colonel Curry and more and more of the folks out there through the years. We're pretty blessed to have them in our midst. Very patriotic, very hardworking, very good bunch of people. And if you ever have a chance to get to know some of these young airmen coming into town for any reason, by all means, take that opportunity. Good people. Thanks.
Better?
I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Helms?
Just to touch real quick on the Heritage thing here, as bad as I hate to say it, I wasn't able to make it. I was working all day. But I know they did have an excellent turnout. Had lots of people, which they were, you know, hoping for. And I do believe that the Heritage is still all decorated up. They left everything up. If anybody is interested in renting or having a party out there, it's already decorated for Christmas, everything ready to go. Thank you.
Riepel?
Nothing.
Mr. Demers?
Just to say that, you know, I think, you know, the state surplus numbers came out again today and it's at a grotesque number. When I think about what we've talked about, what you've said about communities, you know, other than us, like, 10% is a lot, but there's other communities out there that are doing more. I think it's, I know I won't be a part of this board, but it's important for our city to keep making the point that that money needs to be reinvested and not just held. I think our legislators need to hear that. People down in St. Paul need to hear that, that that money needs to get out the door because it's not doing anything good, sitting in a bank, sitting in reserve. We know, like you said today, Marilyn, you know, it's hard on people, not just what we're putting out on people, but what's happened at the grocery store, what's happening for anything. You know, it's expensive to live. And for the state of Minnesota to be sitting on $17 billion of reserve money is, like I said, it's grotesque. And we need people to get on board and get that money out. So, thank you.
Nothing to add. Thank you.
Just want to add a little bit to what Mr. Demers said. I know that Senator Mark Johnson had said on some communication today, asking for people to give them input of what they'd like to see. I know that there's other things out there. I know Walz has, Walz tweeted today, I want to give $1,000 back to everybody, which I think is not the right way to do it. But I think you need to look at the cities and look at the whole of what we're doing. So if you have any ideas, reach out to Senator Johnson or Representative Keel, they represent us. We are going to be going down, January 24th and 25th, we'll be there to meet with them, talk about our city. Coalition Government Cities Legislative Day, so we'll be down